I do have minutes. I don't know if there's one, two minutes today or not. I didn't do an agenda because I don't have anybody on the agenda. That's what I wanted. Or I didn't have anybody call and ask.
So basically all we have to do is the end of the month.
Yes, I do have some resolutions that have to be done. One particularly, but we also need to get that solid waste one done so that I can get it out to the cities. So they can get their new bills for January done. But other than that, I think that's the only thing I really had that was. And I didn't, these are the new copies with the new date, but I didn't make copies, new copies of the new date. I figured you guys threw these away probably anyways, so. I'm getting ready. We'll just look at them.
I did have a concern about our executive session, Terry. Do we need to say that when we came out of the executive session that basically all we did was agree to allow Jennifer to attend a meeting on our behalf, on behalf of the counties? Because we didn't make a motion or an action, but you know what I'm saying? That's really kind of what came out of that is. And I knew that wouldn't be in the minutes because we never said anything about it, but.
Let's see. Yeah, I guess we could say that we.
We can even say that the county attorney agreed to.
Yeah, let's do it that way, sir.
Yeah, would you mind putting that? Yeah. Would you mind putting that in there, Don? After executive session, instead of no action taken, maybe just we reconvene with the meeting and the county attorney agreed to attend a meeting with the state. It would be Kansas Department of Aging and Disability, or if you just want us to K-Dads in there. On our behalf.
That was after the second one, correct?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, because we had talked with the other attorney on the phone.
So I struck out the one and put the county attorney agreed to meet with K-Dads on the board's behalf.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. I don't see anything else. I have two pretty minutes. November 19th, 2018 is corrected.
I'll second. There's no further discussion of all those papers yet.
All right.
Next thing.
Before we do the accounts payable and such, I mean, I feel like we need to update Aljo as to where we are when we talk to the attorney about Lake Park Manor. And then I just got out of Kelly's office and we had a committee meeting and I'd like to kind of reiterate some of that. And because on Monday, Jennifer plans to come beyond the, do we have an agenda for Monday?
Not in the hour.
Okay. Jennifer plans to come and give us more stuff, so I think there are some things maybe we should talk about. Some of it's executive session because it was given to us in executive session. The committee stuff is not. Basically, I just think the committee's very confused. They want us to tell them what to do, in a sense, and we kind of need to make that decision. And so I know that there's not a lot we know until we get this licensing thing figured out. But right now we have a couple of options and I would say, one is, do we want, and I only got this model from some other counties that were doing it, but do we want to hold the license? You know, when we apply for this license, do we want the county to hold the license? And we need to ask the attorney then what kind of liability backlash that may have. But the idea behind that, from the other places I've talked to, is that when your management company comes and goes, your license doesn't. And then we don't have that same problem.
Is that something we should run through, caking up a number?
Potentially.
Yeah.
I think we should probably touch base with them.
Would you mind making a note to ask them?
They're insuring the building already, as far as the structure. I don't know what they'll say about.
I know that one of the things in the questionnaire says, "Do you own a hospital?" And then it makes it clear that they are not responsible for the liability. We would have to have a separate insurance policy.
That would be reasonable, I would think. I mean, I could understand that.
Right, especially in healthcare. I mean, I'm sure it's a malpractice kind of separate.
You know, I think, I would have to say that the way the last few years have gone, I think the best thing would be for the county to hold the license unless there's some extreme liability issue because, you know.
Well, we're in that problem right now.
Or at least some sort of a joint license, or I don't know how any of that would work. But I think that if we decide to send a, if we were to send a leasing out the door tomorrow, then the license would still be there.
Exactly. And I think that's why other structures have been formatted that way. I mean, I'm not opposed to it. Like you said, we have to look into liabilities issue, but.
I'm sure like Don said, we'll probably have to get a supplement on a policy, but what that would cost, I wouldn't have any idea of it.
Well, and you figure whoever is operating it now or was had that same type of overhead cost. You know, that's just associated with running operations.
I really think that for the residents and the employees, the county holding the license would be.
If we're going to continue to be the landlord, for sure.
Yeah, it would be comfortable level, I think.
Well, and our committee just had a little bit of this discussion and some of the confusion is, can you license the nonprofit if this board forms? And my understanding is yes, of course you can, but I don't know how that works as far as what their autonomy is separate from the county. So just because we appoint them and fund them, we have the same thing with council and aging. We appoint their board and we fund them, but we really have no authority over the actions that are taken by that board.
Well, do I understand it right that we can, the county can own a for-profit business, we just can't operate it? Is that correct? There has to be something separate from the commission operating it. Is that the way I, is that?
I don't.
The way I was.
Yeah, I think it's.
Hold out prior to conversations.
Yeah, and it's complicated because, for example, you can be deemed a nonprofit if the majority of your funds, and I think it only has to be 51% as majority, are accumulated through donation and/or public subsidy. So since, yes, since we are pretty much subsidizing these certain, you know, we are technically owning that, yes. But there's a, there's a line there because a nonprofit cannot operate, physically operate a corporation.
Yeah, for profit.
Right. So, and you can invest in stocks. You can have a nonprofit that invests in stocks that is for a corporation, that's a for-profit, but you can't necessarily be part of the management of that.
But you know, I never have completely understood how the hospitals set up because they're not a five, a one, a three. The foundation is, but the hospital's not. Do you know how that, how was that?
Well, that has something to do with the state statutes, doesn't it? It was created by the state statutes and I don't know whether state statutes apply to nursing homes.
There is. There's a whole section that's similar and.
So why would we not be pursuing that line instead of a nonprofit? Why wouldn't we be pursuing the same setup as we have with the hospital?
Yeah.
And then create a nonprofit to support, to take donations, which we will have to if they're going to get.
Like hospital foundation.
But to me, I, you know, if we cannot use the same board at the hospital and the nursing home, which it appears we can't, then I think they need to be set up similar.
No, they.
The thing, the thing is that the county is responsible for that hospital and we will be responsible for that nursing home. I mean, the buck comes back to the county taxpayers.
But I read the other day, the biggest hurdle of Slone Regional taking over the Gary County Hospital was that Gary County Hospital employees are under capers or kippers.
They were, they were county employees or state employees. Let's see. They can be.
They are covered under kippers in Slone Regional.
Because North Central Kansas Juvenile Detention Center has had a choice. They could either be capers or they couldn't because they receive their funding from county taxpayer.
Government TPS, government.
But yes, they can't get the state health insurance. That's weird, I think, that they can be under kippers but still can't get the, because they tried up here, didn't they, to see if they could get under the state.
But they're not under kippers, are they?
No, they're not under kippers up here. They've got their own retirement deal.
I don't, I don't know what they did or they didn't and why they wouldn't have been able to because I think they're accepting other groups unless the state is just, that has to be a governmental.
I don't know. I.
But I, I read that.
Well, you see, the schools can't.
They can now.
They can now.
Yeah, they allowed them to join, I think, two weeks ago.
There, when we were having that trouble, the school, we couldn't get county or couldn't get on the state plan.
So I agree with you, what you just said about pursuing that statute outlined scenario.
I think that's, to me, the only feasible way to go.
I mean, I think that's the whole reason the state kind of created that is so that we have something to go by. I'm just looking it up here.
Steve Granzo could probably tell you how they're set up as far as.
He gave me a picture. I took a picture in one of our first meetings of a resolution that I sent him from the commissioners.
Established it originally. Which is probably, doesn't even exist anymore, the statute that we used to, or it's been changed, I'll bet you. That was what, '60?
Fifty.
I was thinking '56, but I don't know why I think that.
Oh, yeah, I was born in there. It was open in '56.
Yeah, it was by resolution. Public hospital and it has the statute, I thought. And he said I gave it to him a long time ago. Funny thing, I don't remember that. I give so many records out to remember everything.
Yeah, the old days were, I was born in this hospital. My mom died at an RH factory. And my aunt and uncle threw me in the car and took me to Slone. And I had two blood transfusions. Threw me in the car and took me. Wasn't no ambulance back then.
Right, well, it was probably, yeah.
I think all, all the mortuary had a, sort of aim of the third, they had no medical training whatsoever. But my aunt and uncle threw me in the car and took me to Slone.
I don't see a resolution or a statute number at all.
Under what he gave you?
Oh, whereas under the authority of Chapter 168 of the Laws of Kansas for 1945, it is the duty of the Board of Commissioners when the above and foregoing prerequisites have been accomplished to submit the proposition to the electors of said Lincoln County at the next general election.
I'm guessing Dick A. would know how to do it, or someone affiliated with Dick A. would know how to do it, said it does.
So the last time I read it, basically we have two options. We can set up a board and that board can either be appointed by us or it can be elected through an election. And I think that's where we need to start. If we are going to form this board, we need to pick one of those routes, go with that route and start from there.
This resolution was only to establish the levy. It wasn't to establish the actual hospital. So can I further back?
So we don't know how it's set up as far as tax exempt status?
No. I could go back and search some.
But there are specific statutes for hospitals and then for nursing homes separately.
Yeah, because when I get further in it, it's talking about the levy, two mills.
I did get the Lucas paper the other day and see the Lincoln Park Manor on behalf of the new office in Lucas.
With how many employees?
Yeah.
Did you see that?
Yeah, I saw it.
How many?
At least five.
Yeah, five or six, yeah.
It sounded, the way I got it, they're operating out of Lucas covering everything from Smith Center. Big area.
Which is interesting considering we were told by the current owner that that was a non-lucrative, you know, leech on the operation.
I'm questioning why, if they've been operating on behalf of their son porch, why are they calling it Lincoln Park now?
Well, he owns the rights to that corporate name, so.
I guess Alexis might, I would say, needs to be appointed. I think we can run into troubles when there are elections. Number one is oftentimes those elections don't jive with local elections and then the elections always become political too. And I think that, that it would be better to have an appointed.
And be non-boardable.
Appoint a board and then we could also, I think it's important that the representation be.
Geographical?
Yes, geographical, not, it needs to be population-wise too, some, but geographical because I can see where you, well, it's just like wherever you divide those districts, if you're going to do by population, you're going to, you're going to have pull-in Lincoln Center. And so eventually it could all be.
Consolidated and, yeah.
You know, it could, they could all be elected from there and I think it's important that the outer areas be represented. But it's going to be hard to find people to do it.
If you set it up, set the damn thing up, you can only develop four or five people, but.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
You would have to have it tied.
Don't they hold their own private elections though? It's not like you don't run the election.
It would have to be tied in and we'd have to check with the security states offices. Because there are hospital districts that have hospitals.
And there are community colleges too.
Okay, from our notes from that first meeting as a committee, I typed in Chapter 168, hospital formed under, now it's under KSA 20, or sorry, 802501. So.
KSA 80, 802501, yep. So Steve must have told us that.
I wondered if, the other thing I wonder is, was there not a license for the one out in the country?
The board farm?
Yeah, was it not licensed and we never, there was no license needed until they.
Yeah, I'll bet there was.
Because the county would have had to hold that one.
There was no.
So I was wondering why, we're in the mix that we lost the license. If there were, if that had to be a license.
Sam had that from the very beginning.
See, that's, that's a question.
Well, they leased it to them, but did we just let our license expire or did we give it to them?
Do you think there was one?
Well, that's what I don't know.
I mean, the government didn't stick their nose in everything, but.
Yeah, well.
I had, I had that same question. So when you established it, like you said, if you were leasing it out, who did get that initial license because was it private or was it owned? Because you wouldn't think, you would think that either you would sell it to that, to that operator, sell it or gift it. I don't know how that works. But it, but Sam, but Sam's was here for what, 30 years?
I would guess, I would guess good Sam said their li, had a license because they were in hospitals and they were ever. But my point, my thought is, did we just let ours expire if we had one?
Yeah, but what license did we have because there would.
But then they would come with their own.
There would have been no Medicare or Medicaid back then.
No, no, they didn't have that. No, I.
But you'd still get licensing from the state just to have the facility, to operate the facility.
To operate, to have the facility.
Or maybe you didn't have to have that and only the nursing administrator would have one.
Back in the 60s.
Well, there was administrators.
Yeah.
I can remember.
That first one, that first one was just Mrs. Mays.
Flossy Russell, I had those two houses down here.
Yeah.
And she had old people in both of them.
I don't know.
When I was a kid, that was still going on. She still had people in those houses.
So the other thing that we talked about in the committee meeting is doing the research and reaching out to management companies. So the idea is, as the attorneys kind of relate to us, we can't just apply for a license without saying that there's someone capable and experienced to do this job. So we need to secure a management company. And here's where the question comes into play. We need that management company. Are we, as the commission, going to engage them and write up some kind of agreement where, you know, they will be working under the direction of the board? Do we do that first? Do we have them engage with us directly and then say, after this, you know, after we appoint this board, then that will kind of take place? Because there's some timing issues. We have to have the management company release the license. We have to have the license in order to really operate the facility. So if we want the management company to report to the board and have them watch over the finances, basically, that's, I mean, that's my assumption of what the board is going to do. Unless we decide that we're going to watch over the finances at this table, which.
I think you're better off having the board do it.
So we need to establish what things we want the board to do and how to construct that board. And then we also need to reach out to these management companies and ask them to engage with us, telling them what we want. Well, basically what we want is an entire operational, you know.
Well, those management companies may have a situ, may have situations where they're operating that way now. They might have a template.
They do. Well, I don't know about with a new establishment, but I know just from the ones that I've talked to, they basically say, "Let us see the bookwork. Let us see what we think we can do with it." So they look at all of them and they say, "Yes, we can make this work." So then you have an agreement written up, a contract of sorts, and they basically operate it, show you their expenses, pay their people. They have their tiered management come in and kind of set up a structure, like you said, a template. And then that's how they operate and it can be for a certain amount of time. And I know Steve Granzo is kind of pushing, well, the county can then have the board hire one single administrator who does everything. And that may consolidate costs, but we may, we may be really far away from that stage. That could be really far.
A year down the road or two, whatever.
So I think.
I think you're going to have to hire a management company for a period of time or two.
Right.
When the thing happens, it's going to happen. Getting everything set up ahead of time. Exactly how they want isn't going to happen as fast as.
So I think what we need to do though is establish parameters for this board, like what their expectations are. Because whatever kind of charter establishes them, which Don, I don't know specifically, like he said about how we set up the hospital board, but we need to, do we have that anywhere here?
The hospital?
Charter, like to.
I would have to look. I don't know right off the top of my head.
Yeah. You know, I think we need to put that outline together.
I think that board is independent. That they can make decisions.
They can make every decision.
They make all the decisions that we have.
Yeah.
Basically, the only control we have is the appointment.
Well, and there's the question, okay?
And the public building commission, where we control the public building commission.
Yeah, but we, so once you establish that board, they're going to be in charge of the operation of that. Now, it's not that you can't talk to the board members and do some persuasion, but I was on the hospital board when the commissioners wanted us to do some things we weren't going to do. And it, we didn't do it. I mean, you know, because we didn't feel it was right. So, so once you establish that board and turn that board over, it's not so much what we want them to do. They're in charge of managing or running that facility.
So then here's the question. Do we set up a lease agreement between the commission and that board? Because in that factor, you can have some, you know, control over what the terms are. Because here's the problem. If you appoint a board that is fiscally irresponsible, who's going to foot the bill? We are. So.
Well, that's why you don't appoint just everybody, anybody.
I guess what I'm saying is.
I, I, I think we may disagree in the fact that people that I am going to appoint, I trust, will be judicious and will do the right thing. I'm a, and I'm not, Alexis, I think you feel that they may not, I guess. And I put my faith in that when I appoint these people, I know them well enough that they are, they're going to act.
One can do it.
Yeah, and one can't.
One can do it.
Okay, and for me, it's honestly not about appointing them and wondering if they can or can't. It's more like this. You have a group running a business with someone else's money. That gets into a scenario where they're not personally, you know, in this seat, I feel personally responsible for how this money is distributed, even though it's not mine. And I feel that everyone in that situation should feel that way. But if there becomes a situation, if someone's having that hard of a time making a go of this, you know, we can't assume, we hope, but we can't assume that it's just going to be that much easier with a new group. Okay, it may be, it may not be. But let's say it's not. So what if that subsidy goes from 120,000 to 240,000 to 480,000? You see what I'm saying? We don't want to get ourselves in a situation where, no matter how good of a person they are, what kind of job they're doing, you know, if the commission is just going to keep footing the bill for the gap that's created in the financing, there's got to be some sort of control over that. So what do we do? We, right now it's just the line item of the general budget, correct? So what do we do? Just cut that line item? I mean, we have an obligation to fund it, but without some sort of strings attached as far as how that operation is being.
Do you remember how that was set up, planned, built?
Well, they basically, when they ran out of money, they, they asked, they went to the township and asked, asked for some money, you know. Otherwise, they didn't. I mean, there was no set amount. The hospital board is mill levy. I mean, they're, they're technically can't get any more. Which, you know, basically, when we set the budget, we're going to set how much that home is good. Now, you know, if the hospital goes defaults on those bonds, we're going to pick them up. You know, and the same thing's going to happen with the rest of them. If they default on, and cannot make it on what we give, we're going to have to make it up. We're going to have to make some changes. I mean, you know. But, you know, yeah, you know, it is other people's money, but I guess the people that you appoint to the board, most of them are going to be, it's going to be their money. You know.
And all I'm saying is.
It's certain money. You know, if you don't do a good job, we're going to, you're going to have, you're going to have to pay more. You're going to have to pay more yourself, you know.
Right.
It comes back and says, you know.
I agree. I'm just looking at it as.
I'm pretty confident the biggest problem out there right now is their sustainability.
No, I think that's true.
Sustainability gets reestablished, I think that, I don't think it's going to take much more.
I, I.
And I, I have a thought too. Well, we've heard several times from different people that this should at least be self-sustaining, especially because we give subsidy. And I'm assuming, you read in the minutes that we signed the contract with Derek Gauding. And he was going to, for around $9,000, he's going to put this pro forma budget together. So I'm assuming that budget is including what we're giving as far as an overhead expense, you know, allowable overhead expense, like paying the taxes, paying the insurance, things like that. like that. So, that right off the bat gives you the advantage to make it financially stable. But I don't think people want to see that number slowly increase, no matter who takes over management, is what I'm saying.
If it goes to a nonprofit, we have the ability to petition the state to do away with taxes, right? Is that correct? If it goes to a nonprofit, we have the ability to petition the state to do away with property tax. Also pay no property tax.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
The reason is...
Yeah, we're receiving incomes where we're renting, but once we don't, once we quit renting.
I see. Okay, so that's definitely a reason to, to maybe even isolate that board and give it a nonprofit status. I mean, if you're saying they're gonna act independently, whether we appoint them or, well, even if we appoint them, then maybe there is an advantage to having them go ahead and have their own five oh one C three status, but wait.
Or whatever.
But we still own it. Okay, but if they're a nonprofit and we don't charge rent, then we can do away with that cycling that we do of tax money for the, for the property tax.
I understand the reason why it's, the reason why it's taxable is because it's generating revenue.
Revenue, yeah. And once it quits, once we do not make it revenue, I don't think it can be taxed or will be taxed.
Well, if it's being run by our own appointed board, whether it's a nonprofit or not, and we don't charge rent, is that still, that's still, that's okay.
I think that's what makes it so that it doesn't require revenue.
The hospital is to make money, supposed to be making money.
Yeah, so that's twenty thousand, isn't it?
I think...
For the property?
Ten something now.
At the ten something.
Let me just look really quick if you don't mind, accounts panel, because we just paid half, so...
Wait, are you talking about the hospital?
Uh, the nursing home.
Nursing, hospital doesn't pay property tax.
I thought it didn't already.
Well, did you pay it before twenty two?
Uh, no, we just paid it on this, should be on this report, completely withholding.
I'll, I'll look it up.
It's not important, it should, a number won't exist anymore. That will reduce the bottom line.
So, I think one of the questions that we need to ask Mr. Hay is, is it possible to have this board, if they are going to be on the license and the county, like you said earlier, the, the possibility of more than one entity on the, right, because it, it says the provisions of this section shall, let me see. Okay, no license to operate any one adult care home shall be issued under that act to more than three different persons. And so, that's the question then too, is it in the name of the, I think it actually goes in the name of the individual, so like whoever's sitting on the commission or whoever's sitting on the board, probably the president or the, yeah, yeah, the chairman here or the president there, however they set that up, I think it does go into the, the personal name.
Yeah.
Three thousand sixty-nine was the first half, so six...
How much?
Six thousand, yeah, a hundred.
Sixteen thousand.
Okay. So, we need to relook at what our subsidy is going to be, because if we're not charging rent, and then we're eliminating that cycle of the property tax going back to us, that number changes pretty significantly, as well as the overhead costs for covering three Okay, I think then that first question I'm gonna write down for Dick Hay is then who needs to be on the license?
Yeah. Um, maybe, maybe it's just under that board, the board has acted for the commission, so I don't know if the commission needs to be on there or just the board.
But see, like in our, in our lease now, some of the stuff that we put in that lease that does protect the county is you may not change the number of beds, license of the facility, you may not do things like that. So, my only concern with that is if you're creating a whole separate appointed board or nonprofit that's acting independently of the commission, what are, you know, what are the, how do you change or control any of the parameters under which they're operating? Is, is my question, if we're funding it, if we weren't funding it, it would be completely privatized, really.
How do you do the hospital?
I don't know. I mean, that, I'm not really familiar with that process, to say.
That's basically, we're, we're funded. Taxpayers are funding it. I would assume there would be open communications to the commissioners themselves, if they're going to make significant alterations, there would be, they would come before the commission and tell us why they're doing it. Now, can we stop them? Probably not.
Well, and we can withdraw funding, I suppose, is the last resort.
Yeah, I think you'll find those people answer the public probably more than we do.
Yeah.
Because I, I know people are on the board who get called a lot.
Yeah. I mean, we, they're calling, I mean, it's constant, I'm not constant, but I mean, yeah, I mean, they're, they're, they're just like elected officials, they're listening to the public, and the public, if you're on the hospital board and something's wrong with the hospital, they don't call me, they call a member of the hospital board, probably. And then if they don't get satisfied, they may call them, but yeah, but I served on the hospital board, yeah, I mean, that's, when they didn't like things going on at the hospital, that's, um, how it's contacted. I think they'll be receptive to the, to the public.
Okay, so, do we have some sort of instructions for the committee? I mean, I personally think we should charge the committee with creating a, a list of expectations for this management company, which is, it basically is all inclusive, I mean, we're asking them to do everything for us, but I think the committee's kind of waiting, you know, from what...
Yeah, I don't know, I mean...
I think, well, I, I think the management company will have their sets of expectations, or what they're going to do, so you can see them. And once you look at them, then you're going to decide if there are other things that are going to be needed, I guess.
Yeah, they're gonna turn on a contractor, and in that contractor, it's gonna say what they're gonna do and what they're not gonna do, and then we will...
And I would say that it's probably going to, contract is, to start with, is going to be with Lincoln County, with Lincoln County, I mean, you know, and...
Until it's board and stuff.
And maybe you say, and, uh, I don't know, whether you say that for a period of time it will act directly to the commissioners, and when a board is formed, established, the commissioners will inform you of when that transfer is, that you will no longer be answering to us, you will answer to them.
Okay. I think, I mean, personally, it's probably the best solution so that we can move forward with that. If there is a company that wants to engage with us, we need to go ahead and inform that relationship, and although they may not take over management, anyway...
You know, it could be, you could even set it up for a specific number of months, that you will be working for the county commission, and give yourself enough time to get the board established.
And just creatively let them know that...
The, the board will need to sit with us for a period of time, I assume, that we will probably have to meet with the board, uh, at, you know, as that transition goes, you know, but basically, the board will be making, eventually is gonna have to be making those decisions, you know, that we can...
And I think that's some of what the question was, I had said about, you know, whether or not those board meetings become, um, okay, so, the majority of their funding is not gonna come from us, it's gonna come from revenue that's generated, okay, and then they don't really, I mean, they are an appointed body though, so that kind of, there's, there are some stipulations there as to what makes you subject to open meetings and open records. And I'll just see, some of the problems, what we've had in the past few years is lack of communication and lack of access to knowing, you know, what those financial documents have been, what things, you know, so...
But they, it's the operating independent from that, so it's...
But that's what I'm saying, I don't know if the way this board is structured, if they're gonna be subject to open with meetings and open records.
It is the hospital's subject, though.
Yes, they're, they're, yeah, it'll be subject.
But I think that's state statute.
Other than...
I think that's set up in this, in the state statute though, um, because they're also generating revenue, and that's one of the hangups, like if your, if your operation is not generating its own revenue and it's being more than fifty-one percent subsidized by public, by public tax dollars, then that's one of the stipulations that makes you subject to open records and open meetings. And so, my concern is, where does that fall with this appointed board or nonprofit? And so, Steve Granzo had said, well, maybe you can include that in the charter of the organization, you know?
Another question for Hay, I think.
Okay, I'm gonna write that down.
You know, someone who can ask that to legalities of the... How to board and set up the functions.
Well, and it would also be, it would behoove the commission to have some sort of requirement of contact, even if it's quarterly, they just give you a quarterly report so that you know where you are, because if you can adjust that line item in your budget year to year, I mean, that's helpful to, to cover other expenses that you may incur. I know that, um...
You could anticipate problems soon.
Yeah, yeah, well, and just looking at the hospital, I mean, we, we've been getting ten mils, so that ten mil number, dollar amount significantly increased three years ago or whatever it was. And so, how, how does that, how is that stated?
That it happened at the same time they got a four percent reduction from Medicare.
Yes, yes.
The increase did quite cover, I don't think, the four percent reduction from Medicare.
Well, and that's something they've taken into consideration, but say it didn't.
Yeah.
And that extra a hundred and fifty thousand is there, I mean, I don't, I didn't read thoroughly enough to know if that ten mils is set or if it's up to ten, is it up to ten? So, there you go, you know, if, let's say that the redu- reduction in income didn't happen, and they're getting an extra hundred and fifty thousand, you know, you gotta, you gotta make those decisions from this end as far as where that money is being sent. So, I would just hate to see us form a completely set, if we're gonna own the building, again, I'm gonna go back to that, because, you know, in my, in my personal opinion, if it was operating in the private sector, it would have to compete on its own, just like any other business, and you'd have to retain customers, and you'd have to, to please the public, so...
I'm in a meeting.
Everybody looked at their phone a long time. Turn it off. Jennifer's coming in Monday, you said?
Yes, she's gonna come in Monday, and she said she has more correspondence from the attorney, Mr. Hay, and they do not have a meeting set up yet, but, you know, that's, that's the next step ultimately.
Well, Thanksgiving, I don't think they're gonna get much accomplished.
Must be nice, huh? Not to work holiday.
Here it is, Dawn. First half of the taxes, three thousand sixty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents.
I think it's gotten a rush, probably.
Who did they do?
Lincoln County Treasurer.
Well, I looked into the county treasurer, I didn't see it.
It must be up higher or...
Well, this says, this says, there's another one up here, Lincoln, Lincoln County Treasurer, but down here it's got Lincoln County Treasurer again.
Yeah, so when you set up your vendors, um, you set it up and then it automatically numbers them, and so if you already have a Lincoln, Lincoln, you can't always necessarily put it in an alphabetical order, because Hannah's like, there was three vendors, and I was like, well, I looked and I found two, but I couldn't find the third one very quickly. I should've just went down through all of the Lincolns.
Is that a Realtor? Did you see a Realtor?
He's an attorney from Ellsworth. He's Greg Hoffman.
Oh, that's, oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Never let in.
Okay, there are a few things I wanted to share with Aljo from our executive session, so I'm gonna ask her executive session.
Well, you can, what can we wait until I get, look through sales?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's do these and then hopefully...
Pops, Pops tires, did, what did we do, buy a bunch of tires? And Poms, P-O-M-P-S, says tires for the highway.
I, um, signed that check and I remember looking at it because I thought it was...
I mean, who P-O-M-P-S is?
It's the weirdest name ever.
I never remember having them before.
Those tires are batteries.
Poms Tire Service, they bought eight, eight big something or another, another eight big something or another.
Where is that? Where is that? Where is that?
Says Green Bay, Wisconsin.
Oh, we don't...
Yoko R Y zero twenty-three.
Who owns, why used to be at Westfall? That sold, that's why they shut down the Westfall part. I'll bet that's the thing, I bet that's the outfit.
I wonder, well, I just wondered if it wasn't like for a, a big piece of equipment.
Oh, they're greater tires, I'm sure, that price. But, you know, that outfit out of Kansas, they bought soldiers and Dennis Ray for them.
Yeah.
And then, then they got bought out by another company, and I'll bet that was the company that bought them out.
Eleven R twenty-fours and eleven R twenty-twos.
Well, those are truck tires, eleven L twenty-four, is that what you said?
Eleven R twenty-four and eleven R twenty-two.
Same tire.
And eleven R twenty-twos.
I think we can sneak over to the driver's license office for our exact, and then we can upset your... They don't, unless they have, they're gonna lock us, but no longer, nor gonna take them away.
What does edge highway mean? Use the cutting edge highway to fully?
That's must've been some equipment we had worked on, but I don't know.
Cutting edge highway, cutting edge highway, that's like five thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars.
You talking about those cutting edges?
Yeah.
That's the greater blade.
Oh, yeah, that's a blade.
Blades are going bottom of the road right now.
So, buying new ones?
They're gonna have to replace them all the time, there's a section about eight inches high.
The bottom that what, that you bolt on, yeah.
They can flip them once.
Okay.
It says we bought fifty of them.
Yeah.
For that?
They're expensive, they're hardened steel, they're very expensive.
What, fifty for, that's not, are you sure? Fifty for five thousand?
Yeah, it says shipped fifty, ordered fifty.
Yeah. See, there's probably three...
A hundred and twenty-nine eighty-two a piece, so, okay.
There's probably three on each blade, I would say, three or four, I don't know, I'll bet the section's all. They're expensive, they're hard to steal, they're very expensive.
What, 50 for, that's not, are you sure? 50 for 5,000?
Yeah, it says shipped 50, ordered 50.
See, there's probably three-
12982 a piece, so, okay.
There's probably three on each blade, I would say, three or four, I don't know how big the sections are. If you, if you're the blade, it's about, I think, about eight, it's about about eight inches, or down.
Are we signing contracts for fuel or how?
I think they've just been calling whoever's seen this, I'd say, to get it from.
We didn't, we didn't do a contract last night.
Yeah. We used to contract with the suppliers, but got the real contract, but it's got the wrong direction on it. So they just call for beds every time they need fuel. George Mark used to always be the cheapest, but now that, uh-
Well, I mean, how much money are we saving to go out of county for something like that?
There is nobody in county to do that.
Go out.
They won't deliver?
Well, yeah, they will, but they're usually-
Go out of the county.
Yeah, they're going to.
There's, there's no major deal out here.
Yeah, there isn't.
No bulk service here anymore, at all, I don't think, is there?
No.
Tesco.
You got Stan, Stan bought George Mark. They bought George Mark for years, he was always way cheaper than that, he actually lived in county. At one time it was Jensen's, that was tighter, and it's Westfall, and time it was, Humwell, they were, in, in, Humwell, I don't know, still, film camps, they ran a tank truck one time. Used to be somebody at Bennington, Bennington Hall, is that what it was called?
Bennington, yeah, Minneapolis, yeah.
Is this payment to Lincoln Building Supply from Capital Outlay for, oh, okay, from the highway department of Capital Outlay? I see.
Sold around that station at Tesco one time. Before those cars left.
He, he owned it until he sold out?
Yeah, I think so. Check him out, he did.
He sold after they're in, so-
Wasn't all they sold out, Tesco too. Curtis and, and Cory bought it, didn't he? Curtis still got it.
Scott, whatever he's doing there. His tank wagon's about done, too.
The DDoD appeal?
Yep. He does some fires up there.
Still need tractor tires?
That I don't know. I don't know that. I haven't seen him run for a while with his truck anyway.
Take over, Red Thompson's coming on, down, do it on here, all back. Wobbin's too busy. Man, I'll tell you what, Richard said, you know, I feel guilty calling Martin out, because Martin was, he better have taken them off, made it all by truck. That, that man takes the damn tire off the rim and everything else, unbelievable.
Yeah, they have quite an operation. I donate them a lot of money every year, too.
Yeah.
Just gave a bunch the other day. Jim said that-
They must run several trucks, because they're here at night sometimes.
Huh?
They're here at night sometimes, unbelievable, guys are here.
Jim bought a combo entire thing. I think they said they had, when he got his, they had two or three left, and they'd be double priced next to it.
Body tires lately, they've gone crazy.
I moved with approved payroll for 201,000 and some odd dollars.
201,536.86.
I'll second. Any discussion? Not all of the papers out. Can't get paid this month.
Yay.
Uh, we've moved to approve payables for 338,000, was it?
Okay. Any discussion? Not all of the papers out.
All right. Thank you, Alexis. Get that down first.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so these are the three resolutions that you'll actually sign. These are the three copies, or the copies of the, there's probably four in there, but these are the ones we'll sign and we get also done.
Oh, better be careful.
Wish my fingers were like they did back years ago, before I beat the hell out of them.
I think it's something with the paper here in the courthouse, because I had been struggling the last several days. It's almost, I think it's like, there's so much static, it's so dry here, but wouldn't be your fingers for me, so.
How many signed copies do you need?
I just need one copy. Um, but this is just for your guys'-
Twenty-two? I have twenty-two.
I have a twenty-two. You have a twenty-two?
I think there was four of each, so.
I've got four of each.
There's a twenty-two.
One was to be signed and one was for you guys to keep. Um, the transportation bus is actually out of money, so, um, we're doing the second half of that. That's what that 21 is about. That's, uh, 2018-20 is the setting the fees that you guys moved and approved last month. And then the 2022 is just the standard that I thought we didn't have to do anymore, but last year, the auditor said, yes, you do. But it's the standard, um, that we're exempting ourselves from the gap procedures and, um, we'll report our financial records on the cash basis, so.
Did you, oh, sorry, this one, right?
Yeah, the back here, the back page.
I'd move, we adopt resolution 1820.
I'll second. We've already done this, haven't we? We just did assign the resolution. All of the papers out.
All right.
Nay.
This one.
These are copies.
Yeah, those have been on the dates. They have Monday's dates.
I think I figured after today I have seven more.
Spoken like a retiree.
Huh?
Said spoken like a retiree.
Yeah. Somebody asked me the other day, you're gonna have trouble walking, working, I said, hell, no.
I move, we adopt resolution 2018-21, moving money to the transportation board.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all of the papers out. Aye.
Aye. This is just the second half of 2018, correct?
Yes.
Are we late doing that?
Um, we should have done it last month, but they didn't catch it, so. And I didn't think to look, I always think to do that. We hold off as long as we possibly can.
Does he watches and, I did, does he, does he watch his own budget, or do you watch it?
Uh, he does, but he does it on, from like the date standpoint, so he puts in the 20,000. We just have always chose to half the payment. I'm not really sure why. Probably what we should just do is do the total dollar amount at the beginning of the year, but I think in the past it has been-
Because we're just transferring to the fund, right?
Yes.
It's still in the same account, so.
Yes, I think-
Budgeted, does that get off again on time?
I think a long time ago, they budgeted 16,000, but if they didn't need 16,000, they didn't give-
Give the whole thing.
Yeah, so-
Is that general line, general line?
The transfers, yeah.
Maybe they do that for the person starting to have tax collections there.
I, that could be, I don't know. It's always been that way, and probably we could have-
I'll move to adopt resolution 2018-22, exempt us from, to gap, so we're in cash basis.
I'll second. There's no further discussion, all of the papers out.
All right.
How long do you leave for the, you think?
I think 15 minutes.
Okay.
I can leave, it's very short.
We could go next door.
Right, it's gone, it's awful.
Okay.
I'll be able to do your-
If somebody comes in and needs to-
If my phone rings, you can answer it.
Okay. They saw her in executive session, why, go back.
So how long?
Um, for the purpose of discussing trade secrets, I would think that'd be most appropriate regarding, uh, Lincoln Park Manor Committee and Attorney Correspondence, I'll say. And all for 15 minutes.
Okay.
All of the papers out.
Aye. Crashed my-
Today's, yeah?
Yes. So I just want to kind of go back. I was trying to do by memory. Aljo moved for payroll, Terry seconded. Aljo moved for accounts payable, Terry seconded. Aljo moved for the resolution for solid waste, Terry seconded, and you voted nay on it. Aljo moved for the second resolution, Alexis seconded it. The one I can't remember is Aljo moved the, for the third resolution.
I seconded that, and I seconded payroll.
And you seconded payroll? Okay.
But he seconded, uh, payables.
Okay, thank you. Glad I asked, because-
Yep, that's right, then.
Okay.
Well, it's gonna rain.
Do we have any, any sort of Jennifer Monday yet? I mean, I know you're all shit, but how many people, like, do we have? Um, did Jennifer get on yet?
I don't know, the guy-
She has not got on yet, and they just did it again.
Sunday night.
I'll just wait for you.
It's supposed to start raining about 2:00.
I know David is on, and somebody else is on. Let me go grab that.
David Doe.
That chance at 6:00.
Uh, David Doe, yeah.
From about, uh, 5:00 till, oh my God, it's 3:00 or more, 80, 90 percent.
Yeah, I sort of thought. Well, I think it's supposed to be heavy, it's just supposed-
They did have snow in for Sunday, but they took it out.
Sunday night?
Monday night.
Yeah, the guy on the radio just was coming over.
This Sunday night coming, snow?
Monday, inch, he said up to an inch.
But they took it out, man, but now they're talking rain, starting about 2:00 all through the night.
It's supposed to be cold Monday, isn't it? Like 20 or something, 23?
Uh, 29 for a high, 16 for a low. But they're taking it out. They had some rain, they had some snow in there for like next Saturday, and they don't have it now either. But in an hour, there could be snow every day. Well, these guys love this.
Okay, Marilyn Helmer, David, and then Michael.
Okay.
And then Jennifer, we have all those, so. Okay, so.
Oh, are we done?
Yeah, we're done. And I don't think it's going to respond.
I assumed it was.
Do you want me to help you write that down?
Okay.
I said, we're done.
Okay, so Terry, or Aljo.
Yeah, payroll.
Payroll.
Then me.
Um, and Alexis. Then Aljo.
Payable.
Payables.
And Terry.
And Terry. Okay, Aljo, and then Terry for resolution one.
Yeah, with me on a nay.
And, okay, and then Aljo and-
Terry, no, Terry on the second one.
Second, that was the tran, the transfer for just?
Oh, no, that was me, I'm sorry. That wasn't the last one, me.
Yeah.
It was.
And then Aljo and Terry on the third one?
Yes, yes, that's correct. That's right.
Terry, it was the second one. Okay, that's right. And then it was Alexis for 15 minutes, a 1116 to a 1130.
Trade secrets, yeah.
Trade secrets.
For OPM and Attorney Correspondence. No actions begin.
Correspondence. And Terry seconded that one, okay. Thank you, sorry.
God, that's, that was made of media near Monday, too.